Twenty-two regular meeting of the Pinehurst Village Council. This regular meeting will be followed by a work session tonight. Both these sessions are open meetings and you're welcome to participate. Participate by being a part of the group here in this room. If you are also watching this, these meetings by live stream and you wish to make a comment under public comments tonight, you may do that by sending an email to the village clerk at the address publiccomments@vopnc.org. That email will be circulated by the clerk and distributed to council members and staff as appropriate. They won't be read at the meeting, but you're welcome to make your comments there and they will be seen. And as I mentioned a few minutes ago, those of you here in the room, if you wish to make comments tonight, please sign the form at the back of the room. Village clerk will pick that up and deliver it to me by the end of the meeting. Having opened the meeting and called it to order, we'll start with village reports from the village manager and village council and Jeff Sanborn.
Thank you, John. I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. I have three things to report. From the stakeholder point of view with respect to the resort, golf activity continues to be very extreme and but well managed. This week is the Women's North and South Amateur, as many of you will know, that follows on in the package of North and South tournaments that the village has hosted, resort has hosted for many, many years. There's also a high school tournament at the resort this week. And of course, over the weekend and next week, the first USGA Adaptive Open will be at course number six over the weekend and starting on Monday. So we have plenty of plenty to see and I hope that we'll all take advantage of that. I also wish to reach out and indicate some thanks to Marty McKenzie, one of our longtime residents and a person very interested in the harness track. Marty reached out to our state senator and state representative, Tom McGinnis and Jamie Bowles recently, and there's an allocation for improvements to the harness track that is included in the state budget. And I wish to thank Marty for that as well. Finally, on a note of sadness, many of us here in the room and some no doubt listening will be aware of the fact that former council member John Cashin died in the last week or so. There will be a memorial service for John this Saturday at the Pinehurst Methodist Church. John was well known and an eight-year veteran of this village council and very well respected by the community until he moved away a few years ago. So we wish Jan, his wife, and their family the best. I'll now go to other council members. Jeff Morgan?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Jane?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Patrick?
Just to mention, I attended the Planning and Zoning Board meeting this past week and the Pinehurst Resort and Country Club came forward with a request, a very impressive and reasonable request regarding their addition of a parking facility on the, on their campus there, which would be a two-level, one-level subterranean. And I just, I know eventually it'll reach us. I just wanted to say it was very impressive and I recall several of our residents way back when mentioning subterranean parking lots and lo and behold, one is evolving. So hopefully this will help address parking problems that are constantly on all our minds. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Lydia?
Thank you, John. Thank you for mentioning North-South. That tournament has been in Pinehurst for more than 100 years, which is pretty amazing. And it's being played on number two and number four today and tomorrow. And match play begins on number two on Wednesday and the public is welcome to come out and watch and walk, walk that course. It's a rare opportunity. Also, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee met yesterday. Two big items on their agenda, they gave, we got a status report on the construction of walkways on McKenzie and Pine Vista. The engineers are looking at the actual placement of those walkways right now. And then it's anticipated that the installation will be completed by the end of fall. Also, the committee began looking at their next projects. They're given a list, they discuss them, and they'll come back to council with what they propose to be the next batch of sidewalks. And I can't tell you how excited the committee is to finally be in a place where there's a lot, there's some enthusiasm for walkways being installed in the, walkways, not sidewalk walkways, being installed in the village. So thank you.
Thank you, Lydia. Move on to agenda item number three, which is motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there any desire by any member of the council to hold off or otherwise seek, comment on any of the consent agenda items? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I move to approve all items listed and considered routine.
Motion by Pat Pozella. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Jane Hoagman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll move on to item number four, get into our regular agenda for the evening. Jeff?
All right. Thanks, John. We have two Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee appointments for you to consider. The first is a reappointment of Melody Jensen.
Yes. I don't think she's with us tonight, but obviously she's been on the committee for quite some time. And her reappointment, I think, is a good idea. However, are there questions of Mark on behalf of this nomination for Melody Jensen's reappointment to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee? Come on up, Mark. And maybe you have any other comments about this first nomination. Go right ahead and then we'll ask any questions, Mark.
She's been a good addition to the committee since she joined a couple of years ago. She couldn't be here tonight. She's on vacation this week, but we certainly would welcome her back for another term.
Great. Questions from council members on this nomination, reappointment?
Yeah, I have a question. Do we have her bio handy?
I emailed that to everybody earlier today, but she came to us as a retired Air Force veteran and was interested in getting involved in the community at that time. And that's pretty much her background. She just wanted to volunteer once they moved to the community, so.
It was the application, I think, we received.
Well, your email was the, was her application, not a bio. We don't keep bios on over.
Right, right. But that background was there.
Could you provide a little background on her? This is, she's new to me and she's familiar to maybe to others, but I don't know Melody.
I couldn't tell you any more than I just did. She, she moved here fairly recently, a couple of years ago. She's been on our committee since then. Her and her husband, I believe, are both retired military. She's a local real estate agent. She's been a valued member of the B-PAC for the last two years. Her and her husband have both volunteered at our bicycle radio that we have and other events that we posted, so. But her background was a service in the military.
Air Force, I think it was, Mark, if you said that.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Now, she replaced Melissa Watford?
She replaced Mike Ventola.
Mike Ventola?
At the time when he stepped down.
Okay.
And Melissa just recently stepped down from the committee.
Right. Two long time, longtime members of that, of that committee.
Yeah, Mike joined us in 2015. Melissa's been with us since well before that time, probably about 2007, 2008, so.
Right. All right. So we're considering Melody Jensen, though. Other questions from council members about this reappointment? Is there a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution 22-20, reappointing Melody Jensen to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for a two-year term beginning September 1, 2022, and expiring on August 31, 2024.
That's motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Morgan. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The reappointment carries. We'll move on to the next item. Jeff or Mark?
Thank you, John. Next, we have a nomination for Paul Ackerman, who is here.
Yes.
To fill the vacancy that's being produced by the fact that Melissa Watford is leaving the B-PAC.
Paul, welcome.
Thank you.
Mark, can you introduce your comments, please?
Yeah, I sent the information to you earlier from Paul's application that he sent in back in April of 2022, I believe. He's attended the last two or three B-PAC meetings now. Resident number six is a frequent walker and an avid cyclist. I believe the shirt he wore yesterday to the B-PAC meeting referenced something about watch out for the old man on the bicycle. So I will let him take it from there and provide some further information as you might be interested.
Well, you're leaving, and maybe Paul will be too shy to say this, hopefully he won't be, but you left out the most important part, and that is he's a former mayor of Taft, California. So we welcome that experience wherever it can be placed. Paul, tell us a bit about your background, if you like.
Thank you. I, my, my career was as a high school teacher. I taught government economics and advanced placement government and economics in a public high school in Taft. And it was pretty easy, quite honestly, to get elected to the city council and to eventually be mayor in Taft because 90% of the citizens there, especially the young citizens, are my former students. And apparently, they didn't hate me as much as I thought they did. So that was a good thing. I also was, after I left Taft and retired, I moved to Santa Maria, California, and became involved with the Santa Barbara County Bicycle Federation. And we put on a bunch of century rides and that kind of thing. And also did, went in and did education in elementary schools, teaching kids how to properly use bicycles. So that's kind of my background.
I can't help asking, with respect again to being elected, and you referred to your students, you must have been a very fair grader, or shall we enhance that by another word? But made a lot of friends among the students, I'm sure, as a teacher. Thank you for your service in that.
Bonus questions engraved on a curve would be my guess.
Okay. Questions from council of Paul Ackerman?
I just have one suggestion. Now, if we're adding Paul and Melody, if we could put all the members of the Pedestrian and Bicycle Committee listed on our website with the terms that apply to them, so the citizens will know who else is on it. That could be done quickly. That would be great.
Yeah, I think in keeping with the idea to have these names on the website under appropriate committees, yeah. Any other questions on this appointment? Is there a motion, please?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment and I want to, I've watched, been to past couple of meetings when you've been there and you, I think you're going to be a really good addition to the, to the committee. So thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
May I have a motion, please, on this appointment?
I move to approve Resolution 22-21, appointing Paul Ackerman to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for a two-year term beginning July 12, 2022, and expiring on August 31, 2024.
That's motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Pozella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Paul, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mark, please inform Ms. Jensen of her reappointment, too. Thank you very much for your time. We'll move on to item number six. Jeff, you want to introduce this or go straight back to Mark?
Mark's going to discuss this topic as well, but it's time to renew the janitorial services contract or enter into a contract for the Fair Barn.
Yeah, as I referenced in my memo to council, this was put out to bid earlier this year. We did only get one vendor who was interested, and it is Sand Hill Services, who has been our vendor for a number of years now. The nature of cleaning at the Fair Barn is difficult. These cleanings are oftentimes done in the middle of the night, after 1:00 a.m., once an event is done, as we're flipping the building for another rental on the next night. So it's a challenge to find contractors who are interested in that type of schedule, but that's what we have to work with down at the Fair Barn. So as you can see, the total cost for the contract is estimated at a little over $52,000. That's based on an estimated 120 cleanings that we will have post-event. And then that also includes bi-monthly specialized cleanings. We wax the floors, we're scrubbing the tiles, we're doing deep cleans of the building so that it's in good shape for the renters that are coming in. In years past, we've typically only done those floor waxing and deep cleans about four times a year, but we are increasing that to six and adding a little more detail to that deep clean to include the scrubbing of the tiles. So you can see the breakdown that we had in there, the cost per occurrence. That's an increase from $269 last year, which is in line with the contract terms that we had previously. So we do feel that this is a reasonable cost as we look to move into the next year and enter into a contract for that.
We have them on an annual contract, as we've seen now. That's, did we ever have a multi-year contract with them or prior?
Most of the contracts have an option to automatically renew with a CPI increase.
Right.
So this one would be the same.
Thank you. Questions for Mark Wagner on this contract?
We had some email exchanges over the past day, because I remember we changed the, changed the fee structure for the Fair Barn. We used to charge a cleaning fee and now we don't. And Brooke, thank you for your emails. And I just wondered, is what we're charging, is our fee sufficient to recover these costs? And, you know, staff is looking into that. But essentially, we do receive in our fee a cost to cover this. So this is not just straight out of our pocket. It is coming from the people who are renting the Fair Barn, essentially.
Yeah, the base fees that we receive for an event, along with the package rates for tables, chairs, it more than covers our, our direct costs that we have per event for our staff that are working the event, the event staff that sets up and breaks down in the cleaning services for that. And I think, as Brooke mentioned in her email earlier today, on average, we're probably right around 90% recovery rate. I see a head shake back there, so that's correct. So of our total operating costs, what that does not include is if there's any discounts, you know, nonprofits get a discounted rate. So when you factor that in, we are fully covering our costs at the Fair Barn.
Oh, but not 100% of costs being recovered?
It averages 90, but when you look at the discounts, which we track the discounts for nonprofits or events that are sponsored by the village that don't pay or get a discounted rate, it is 100% at that.
If I recall, I think Brooke gives us a little calculation of that, pretty much annually.
You get that pretty much every year, kind of a recap of what happened. And they're working on June numbers now, so we'll have that coming out soon, when they probably finish the audit for '22.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mark. Other questions of Mark? Is there a motion for approval of this contract?
I move to authorize the mayor's design need to execute a one-year contract with Sand Hill Services, beginning on July 15, 2022, and extending through June 30, 2023, for an amount estimated to be $52,272.
That's motion by council member Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Pozella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries as well. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Let's go on to item number seven, and I think Doug Willardson probably is coming up for that, Jeff?
That's right, John. And, you know, Doug's, Doug's got three topics to cover with you, all pertaining to our ongoing efforts to refresh and update council policies. The first one is pertaining to the right-of-way policy that you looked at at your last meeting.
Yeah, yeah. So the purpose today on some of these items, Doug, is to take action based upon the comments you have made to us in the last meeting or two.
Right, yeah. So last, last meeting at the work session, we covered a lot of these. So the first one is the rights-of-way use policy. So on Pat's suggestion, we sent this out to different committees and got their input on it. So the one thing that I learned from sending that out was that a lot of people do not understand what a right-of-way is and how the first, maybe 15 feet of their yard may not be their yard. But besides that, there weren't a whole lot of comments. One suggestion that we have incorporated is, in the section that's, the village is not responsible for, we added a sentence that clarified that if there is maintenance being done by the village, that even if damage happened due to that maintenance, we were not responsible for it. So if we went out there and, you know, did some work and someone had a dog fence that's buried underground and somehow it was damaged, but it was in the right-of-way, that wouldn't be our responsibility because, you know, it's our, it's our property, our right-of-way. And then the other change that we had was that we updated the section that's referenced, referencing the municipal code for obstructing the right-of-way. I have an old reference in there, so we updated that. So those are the only two changes from what we had discussed last time. Are there any specific questions?
It's, it's my understanding, Doug, that this policy is really meant to explain the relationship between the village and the adjacent property owner, more than it is to try and explain what exactly we're going to do within the right-of-way.
Yeah, that would be a good way to explain it.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
For reaching out to all the different committees. I think that was great.
Yeah, I thought maybe you could elaborate just a little bit on that. You were able to speak to several committees and other, other groups?
Yeah, so we discussed a little bit at the B-PAC meeting yesterday. And then a couple of the other meetings, they didn't, or a couple other committees, they didn't have meetings between when we last met, but I did submit it to them via email and asked for comments. So the NAC and, I'm trying to remember who else I sent it to. There's for sure one other, but the feedback, oh, the beautification committee. One of the other things that we did hear was, you know, should we add snow and ice in there? But talking to Mike Afkey and Jeff Batten, we're, we're feel comfortable not needing that. But really, that was the majority of the comments, so.
Okay. Any other questions? I believe we have a motion here as well on this item to approve the rights-of-way policy.
I'll, I'll move to approve the rights-of-way policy for the village of Pinehurst and authorize the village manager to sign his design need.
That's a motion by council member Hoagman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Pozella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Doug, you want to carry on?
Yes. So at the last meeting, we discussed a couple of policies or a few policies that we think are, were able to rescind due to various reasons. So we have the tree preservation policy, the lot donation policy, the significant negotiations and significant fertile construction policies that, after we discussed last time, I think there was consensus that we were able to rescind those, and so we'll bring that forward at the, at this regular session.
Yeah, these will all go away.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, this has been discussed the last couple of meetings. Any questions for Doug? I believe we have a motion here as well.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to approve rescinding the previously adopted council policies for the village of Pinehurst as presented.
That's a motion by council member Hoagman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Pozella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Doug, good work. Carry on.
I should add real quickly that we discussed the Manning Beautification Award Program at the last meeting.
Yes.
So the beautification committee is going to bring that up at their next meeting in August. And I'm guessing that they'll be willing to take that on, so that, that's in progress.
Thank you for doing that. Yeah, that was a follow-up, and you've obviously taken care of that as well. We look forward to their comments back to us in August, September, whatever. Thank you, Doug. Go ahead.
And then we have two final policies that we're moving from under the council jurisdiction to administrative. That's the meeting room use policy and the public right-of-way beautification fund policy. And we discussed those last time, and they're both, you know, more administrative than council-oriented, so that's the move that we are suggesting.
Jane, I think, do you have a question on that? Yes, please.
Yeah, on, on the public right-of-way beautification fund policy, that's something that where a little bit of money is allocated to the beautification committee every year so that they can use some for grants for residential beautification projects and some for grants for commercial beautification projects, all, I think, within the public right-of-way.
Correct.
And my understanding is that the, the policy, which says that village staff will figure out each year how much money to set aside for this, subject to the availability of funds, number one, and, and council okay, and that the, the village staff will administer this. But I'm, I'm wondering why we need to move it away from being a council policy to a staff policy and what difference that makes? Because the beautification committee is a committee of the council. So are we breaking strings there? I mean, what, what difference does it make?
I think our reasoning was that the bulk, well, probably the most important part of the policy was funding it in the budget, and that is administrative function that will continue to be under Jeff's purview. So that was the main reason why we had it under that. Jeff, I don't know if you want to add anything else?
I guess from a standpoint of practicality, I don't know that we've actually referred to this policy as we go through our budgeting process every year, because it's, it's kind of automatic that we, you know, we take a look at what we spent the previous year and we reply that to the next year unless there's some compelling reason to change one way or the other. So to your point, Jane, I don't think it matters one way or the other. If you feel strongly about keeping it a council policy.
What amount do we spend?
Only about, isn't it about $10,000 to $15,000 sort of put aside?
Talking about $15,000.
That's all, thank you. I was just trying to figure out how much money we're talking about.
Question is, could the policy for this little bit of money to be set aside each year be discontinued without council realizing that it happened?
I think you'd hear about it from the B-PAC or from the beautification committee, but in, in practice, probably not. In theory, yes.
Okay. I, I think that since it's a committee of the council, it would be more better to keep it as a council policy.
And like Jeff said, I don't, I'm not going to lose sleep over that, so, yeah. If that's what you want to do, totally fine.
Jeff Batten is standing there with a comment, I think. Please, go ahead, Jeff.
I would just fill you in on the dollar figures. Jane was correct. The total is $15,000. However, they are split into two different programs.
Yeah.
One, the public right-of-way beautification policy is intended to be grant funds available to neighborhood associations that wish to do beautification within the right-of-way. You mentioned a commercial opportunity. There is another program called Commercial Appearance Grant Program, and that also can be utilized by the beautification committee as a matching grant program for commercial properties that are looking to enhance their exterior appearances. So, but 15 is the total. Five is dedicated to this purpose, the public right-of-way beautification. 10 is on the other side.
Well, that's, that's the background and the, and the dollars allocated, but you're not commenting on who should see it or who should approve it, I guess.
Well, ultimately, you are approving it in the budget.
In the budget. Just not the decision is that how much is going to go away.
How it's administered is administered at the staff level, it's not administered at your level. But you make the decision as to whether to fund it or not. So I think that.
I think that's the key from the council point of view, actually. We, we, we are informed about and approve the amount that's allocated for that purpose. The staff decides based upon feedback from the beautification committee, I think, how that will be, to whom it will be spent, on what sort of project, right?
I mean, there's an application process. The application actually comes to me. I ensure that it meets the qualifications that are spelled out in the policy, and then it goes to a subcommittee of the beautification committee who actually evaluates it, makes some determination of what they would recommend.
Yeah.
That's at least how the nuts and bolts part of it works.
Yeah, yeah.
Several years back, the, at the direction of the council, the commercial appearance grant was increased slightly. It used to be about $5,000, it went to $10,000. So council has had input in past relative to the financial amounts that were budgeted. But again, as far as the administration of it is, it's handled, you know, at our level.
Jeff Batten, the commercial side, just to define it even further, that's the program we use to help some of the shop owners with storefronts and things of that nature, correct?
That's correct. It could be things like awnings that need to be replaced. It could be landscape, things of those nature. And it is not, it's a max 50% grant up to a maximum dollar figure as well.
I'm, I'm comfortable to leave it, to leave the budget process, obviously, still with council, but to have the administrative side of it work its way through beautification onto the appropriate staff, which would be you, Jeff. It's only the village manager that would make that decision in the end, correct?
Which decision?
The decisions on, on granting the funds under these programs, to whom it will be granted.
I think the beautification committee selects the recipients.
Yeah, the beautification committee makes the determination as to whether they're going to fund or not. I administer the policy procedures and the policy amounts that are permitted under, in accordance with the policy, but they make the determination.
In accordance with the policy, but they make the determination. So if they were to come back and recommend, say, a larger grant than the policy permits, then that's where I would speak to them, say, we can't, we cannot do that. And there are times that we get applications that part of the application meets the requirements, part of the application does not. And so I handle those situations where we need to take out those items that do not meet our policy, and therefore, they cannot be considered. You can only consider, you know, A, B, and C, but you can't consider D, E, and F.
Right, right. Well, I'm comfortable with that. It's, it's, the, the technical side of it is, it's a decision of the assistant village manager, who happens to be the liaison to the beautification committee. That happens to be you, Jeff, right?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Right, but that's, that, that procedure is spelled out in the policy already. We're not talking about changing that procedure. What we're talking about is whether this policy is a policy of the council or a policy of the, of the staff administration. And I, I think I'd like to keep it a council policy so that the entire program would have to, before it could be abandoned, would have to come to us, even though we're not, we're not talking about changing the way the program works.
Right. Or the budgeting approval process of the council.
No, we're not.
Yeah, right, right.
It also couldn't be increased without coming to you.
That's right. But the beautification committee is a committee of the council.
Sure. I guess I would observe that while we don't spend a lot of money in, really, in any of our committees, there are a lot of budgeted items in our overall budget that support our committees, and they're not dictated by policy.
Right.
They're just budgeted. So again, from a staff perspective, we could go either way on this. I just offer that perspective.
I see staff recommends, and staff recommends is significant to me and something of this nature. So I can go along with the staff recommendation. The staff recommendation is to remove these, and I can go along with that staff, I can agree with that staff recommendation.
I think, I think the question is, if there is a change in the policy that were, that were necessary, administrative change, if it is in your, on your list, I think that change would have to come to you, even if it's somewhat simplistic in terms of how we're going to administer the policy. If there is a change in the policy itself, let's say it switches from assistant village manager operations, which is called out in the policy, to assistant village manager administration, that's a change to the policy, and if it's under your list, that's probably going to fall back to you to make that kind of a change. If it's not, then it would, if it's understaffed, then it would be a change that Jeff could make. I only offer that as, as another, I guess, potential difference between having it on your list versus the staff list. In the end, personally, I don't, it does not matter to me one way or the other, because at the end of the day, the budget is your choice as to whether you're going to fund it or not, how we administer the policy. You either want to have control over it. If you do, then, you know, keep it on your list. If not, then put it on our list, and you're still going to have a say one way or the other at the budget time.
I view this as a decrease in bureaucracy with a very low risk to our village, so I do support it also.
Jeff, would you repeat that? I didn't hear that.
I view this as a decrease in bureaucracy and a very low risk to our village in doing that. So I think it's appropriate to do that.
Appropriate to leave it, to, to place it with the staff.
To make it administrative.
Yeah. Okay. And I concur with that.
Anything?
Question? What, what brought this up to this category of review that we're now discussing it?
It, it's just one of the council policies that we're reviewing all of them.
A review.
And, and when it was originally written, it looks like it was intended to be admin, and for some reason, it has been always categorized with the council policies, so...
Yeah, I, I don't, I wasn't around when this was, was all started. I would guess that it was, it was a good idea at one point in time, maybe it was even championed by a council member, and said, let's do this. Okay, we'll make it a policy, so we make, we get it going, and it's not abandoned, right? But, I mean, at this point now, it's so ingrained in our, in the way we do things that maybe it's not necessary for that to be a council policy.
Well, I think Jeff, Morgan and I support the idea of placing it at the staff level, making the change. Is there other support for that?
I do as well, and I'm ready to read the motion, to make the motion.
I thought, to leave it alone.
I'll go ahead, and there are three of us.
Make the motion.
I'll make the motion. I move to recategorize, re-categorize the meeting room use policy and the public right-of-way beautification fund policy from council policies, policies to administrative policies for the village of Pinehurst.
Second. That's a motion by Councilmember Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Morgan. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Would you raise your hands if she's, one, two, three? Any, all opposed?
I'm only opposed because staff says they're not going to lose any sleep over this.
Motion carries, motion carries three to two. Good discussion. I think it's helpful to review that. Doug, thanks for your, your work on these sort of things, and others. Move along to item number 10. Is there other business to come before the council by the staff or any council member today? Seeing none, we'll move on to comments from attendees. At this time, we have one person signed up. If time allows, those of you who might not have signed up, wish to speak, we can probably accommodate that. Teresa Johns, please. Thank you, Teresa. Put the microphone as you, as you wish.
Good evening. My name's Teresa Johns. I live at 50 Glen Abbey Trail. I'm here to talk tonight about the traffic circle. I was glad to see the presentation by NC DOT at the last council meeting regarding options for the traffic circle. I wholeheartedly agree with Jeff Morgan that doing nothing is not an option. It seems that NC DOT has been working on options for over 10 years, and Pinehurst council keeps shooting them down and sending them back to the drawing board. Pinehurst is the largest town in Moore County and contains some of the largest employers in Moore County. Pat stating that over 90% of Pinehurst residents don't need to drive through the traffic circle any time of the day to get where they need to go might make sense if Pinehurst was an island. Pinehurst residents getting to jobs or school in nearby communities use the circle. Residents of neighboring communities getting to jobs in Pinehurst use the circle. When so much of the economy here depends on tourism, why, Pat, would you make such an unwelcoming comment that implies you don't care about people being inconvenienced in Pinehurst traffic since they aren't Pinehurst residents? Additionally, Jane stated she thinks we should limit traffic coming into the village. Again, not a good solution for the tourism industry here. Pat also suggests ways to get around town and avoid the circle. His suggestions include cutting through Village Acres, a neighborhood with probably more kids than any other Pinehurst neighborhood, and a neighborhood with very few walkways. His other suggestion involved cutting through near the hospital. It seems irresponsible to me to suggest sending additional unnecessary traffic through a neighborhood with kids or near a hospital. This is another example of, instead of solving the problem that is in your power and duty to do so as village council, coming up with a plan or suggestion that not only inconveniences others, but also potentially negatively impacts their safety. Pat stated that the plans cost a lot of money to save people from sitting in traffic for a few extra minutes. For the majority of you sitting up there who are retired, it's probably not an issue to sit in traffic or to pick a route avoiding the circle that may also add time to your commute. For people with jobs and kids, they don't always have that luxury. Pat stated that the growth of Pinehurst the last 10 years was less than the 10 years before that. That is true, but the demographics of Pinehurst are changing. Younger people are moving here, and families with children are moving here. A January 4, 2019 BusinessNC.com article states by Tom Paschley of Pinehurst Resort that, quote, "We've definitely noticed the shift in demographics in Moore County. Younger families are moving to the area and adding a new vitality to the community." In that same article, Pat Corso, Executive Director of Moore County Partners in Progress, stated, "It's more families." NC DOT, using the best data and projections they have, are telling you that traffic at the circle will increase. The changing demographics of the area are another sign the traffic will increase. The time has come for you to be a part of the solution for the current and future residents and visitors to Pinehurst and Moore County." Thank you.
Thank you. Would you care to leave a copy of that with the village clerk? Thank you very much for doing that. That's the only person who was signed up. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under public comments tonight? Gentleman in a green shirt.
Mr. Herr.
Followed. Now, you all were sitting here when I made my announcement about signups, and you didn't do that, but please go ahead.
You're late.
Go ahead. And I'll call on anybody else who has time.
All right. My name is Bruce Gettis. I live on Bowman Road in the Pinehurst ETJ. Some of you may know that I've been collecting NC DOT information for a long time, and I've got some information that I sent to the council in an email a couple of weeks ago. In those growth projections in the base year 2010, which I believe you'll see, hear more about this afternoon, there were some pretty significant assumptions about new developments. Out west on Highway 211, in the vicinity of West Pine Middle School, was going to be the Pine Forest Plan Unit Division Development Project. Hundreds, if not maybe over 1,000, new units that are now part of the salt, the Nyx Creek Land Preserve. So that assumption in 2010 is no longer valid today. And I think that number of units, and there are some reports of 16,000 some odd vehicle trips per day just from that new subdivision, are no longer true. So I caution you to look at the assumptions very carefully, consider your positions on zoning in the ETJ, how we might collaborate with other jurisdictions like Foxfire, who also had a planned unit division, sorry, development on Hoffman Road called Stonehill Pines. That was over 1,000 new residences, 90,000 square feet of retail space, two new golf courses. That is now purchased by a gentleman named Tim Sweeney, a philanthropist in Cary, who intends to hold that land in conservation as well. He's not put it in any kind of illegal conservation status yet that I'm aware of, but all told, between those two developments, there's 3,000, maybe 3,500 units that are no longer going to come into play in the traffic analysis zones that are in the traffic demand model. So please take that under consideration, ask the good questions, ask the hard questions. I've got hard copies, if any of you would like this. I think good decisions depend on good information, and a lot's at stake here, so I encourage you to please look at the numbers very carefully.
Thank you very much. I believe some of us have seen that data in the past, Bruce, because of your involvement, but if you'd like to leave that with the village clerk, or at some point, email that, that would be fine.
I will. I emailed it to you all two weeks ago, but I haven't gotten any responses, so, all right, I'll leave a copy.
Thank you. Is there another person to speak? Gentleman in the blue shirt, did you wish to speak, sir?
I live at 30...
Just one second, make sure he's, go ahead, but now that you're at the microphone. David Peterson.
David Peterson, I live at 30 Beaver Lane in Pinehurst, which is about maybe 100 yards from the traffic circle, as, probably could hit a wedge to it. Your vision is the village of Pinehurst is a charming, vibrant community which reflects our rich history and traditions. Nowhere does it say you're going to rip up a beautiful landscaped area and put an eight-lane intersection. That's like the opposite of the village of Pinehurst is a charming, vibrant community which reflects our rich history and traditions. Those are in opposite. If you take the traffic circle more than a couple of times a week, which I think most people do, you realize there are a few times that it is bad. But most of the time, it is not. I work at Pinehurst. I go out every day. Most of the time, Midland is fine. 211, going right is fine. There is some backups, but how would those be alleviated with left-turn lanes? They're going to sit and wait for two traffic signals. That's going to be a five- or six-minute delay anyways. One of the things, when we moved here from Chicago, we immediately noticed was the beautiful flags that are put out on that traffic circle on every major holiday. Every time we've had people come, we make sure we comment and talk about the difference between Chicago and Pinehurst. There won't be any difference between Chicago and Pinehurst in that regards if that traffic circle is taken out so that some people can make a little bit better time. That's really what we're talking about, is a little bit better time, as opposed to our rich history and traditions. Common sense says the status quo is not bad, and it's not that you're not doing anything, it's you're doing the right thing, which is leaving the traffic circle the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Other speakers? Yes, ma'am.
Collette Kalinsky, 25, Queens Court. I do want to say, the reason I sometimes don't sign up is because sometimes it's just a counterpoint to somebody else bringing something up, and today, that's exactly what it is, and that's the traffic circle. I bring it up because somebody says, you know, nobody wants to do anything. Well, so far, the solutions that the Department of Justice, I mean, the Department of Transportation have come up with have not been acceptable. I will say, traffic circles have been around for 100 years, actually, over 100 years. They exist in most major cities. Philadelphia, Logan's Place, has four lane, Logan Circle has four lanes of traffic and seven entrances. It's probably about the same size, maybe a little larger. But what happens usually when you have more traffic is you add the lanes, which everybody has said, well, they had two lanes and it didn't work. But that's because when you start adding lanes, you have to add traffic lights, which they're going to add traffic lights if they were to tear up the circle anyways. So that is one way of looking at it, as to what other cities in England, they've been around for at least 100 years too, and they have it on major freeways, not highways per se, but freeways. So there is a way of making them work. One of the reasons why everybody's putting them in now is because they slow down traffic and they avoid T-bone collisions, and that's the major reasons for their existence. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other speakers tonight? Yes, sir.
Sir Philip Sonian, again, 29 Bedford Circle. I'm speaking to you, I spoke to you a few times about this. The point I wanted to bring forward in general is that communities communicate. Communities must communicate if we're going to come up with a cooperative solution. I would recommend to the council that we look for alternate ways to allow the community to communicate. Right now, we're doing three-minute monologues. Three-minute monologues from a singular point of view. Those never get us anywhere. What does get us somewhere, and when we have a meeting, a group that's mediated, allow individuals to express their ideas in an open format, and look at those items that we agree upon, those 80% solution sets. I can tell you, I've been the senior advisor to multiple four-star generals, multiple three-star generals. I've seen this play out in numerous times where individuals move forward with an idea that they've made an assumption on without having input at the local level. I've watched billions of dollars be wasted doing that. I would hate to see this, this town do that. I think with your short-term rental policy, you should really sit down with everyone, really discuss what's going on, really talk about the economics behind it. I provided some, you know, significant amount of resources to this. There's a significant amount of academic works, not opinions, not editorials, but academic works with the math behind it, with the algorithms, with the details. We can smirk if we want to, but the bottom line is, we exist around an economy that will be challenged here in the near future, and we want to maintain this vibrant atmosphere. So I recognize, I recognize, I am not a high-powered lawyer, you know, that's lived here for all of one year, but I can guarantee you this, this is my community that I've lived in for over 15 years, and it's a community I'm going to remain in. I do not want to be in battle with my neighbors. I want to listen to their points of view. I want us to come up with a cooperative solution, and I want to come up with one where we're not fighting each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sonian. Are there other speakers? Seeing none... Thank you, Mr. Sonian. Are there other speakers? Seeing none, we'll move on to adjourn the regular meeting of the council, unless there's anything else the council members wish to bring up. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, and then we'll take a very short break and pick up with our work session. I think that'd be the wisest way to use our time. So, is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
I'll move to adjourn the regular meeting.
That's a motion by Jane Hogeman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Pat Pizzella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Regular meeting is ended. We'll pick up with the work session at 5:30.